Good evening, I'll call this meeting the Council of City Council to order if it please stands for indication of pledge.
Good evening, I'm gonna go off script a little bit, but I'm gonna invite you in a corporate prayer. You can join along if you like, if not, that's fine too. And we're at a, I'm gonna lead us in the Lord's Prayer. Prayer: Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with the vision of the liberty of justice for all.
Ms. Richter, roll please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1 here. Jace Step, Ward 2. Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Alyssa Cordell, Ward 6.
Here.
Okay, Julia, first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from January 18th. Council, you've had an opportunity to look at these over, now we have time to make any edits, and if there are none, a motion would be in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
And the votes are approved. Next item of business is adding six items, which is already a rather full agenda, and Chair will entertain a motion to do that.
To move.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Randy, it is off and running this morning, we've got the show for the next day.
This morning?
This day, afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals to fill the unexpired term of Malcolm Cooley, the Ward 4 appointee. Our nominee is Jaclyn Hendricks, and your approval of this nominee is recommended.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions? Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's get us started with Z 23-06, please, Mr. Benino.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. First, for the record, all these cases that are gonna come up following this, and this one, and including the following ones, have been properly posted and advertised. There appears to be no conflicts of interest, and they have been reviewed based on the adopted standards for exercising zoning powers. As you know, this is Z 23-06, it's approximately 103 acres. Currently zoned R20 with conditions, and the proposed zoning is RA 12, which is residential attached townhomes. They're proposing a 199-unit townhome development on the northwest quadrant of Center Road and I-75. With that, we had a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission did recommend denial of this application. Staff had originally recommended seven conditions with this, but again, they did not get forwarded from the Planning Commission because of their recommendation.
So if, if council were to decide to move forward, then those conditions...
We would recommend those conditions, yes.
And those would probably need to be in the form of an order. Let me have for council to make that determination. Just wanted to note that. Thank you. Any other questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, I'll open up a public hearing for Z 23-06, and we'll start with the applicant's representation.
Good evening, Carl Lutgens, 114 Old Mill Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, Merrill Trust, I pretty much gave the presentation. I know, Mayor, you don't like saying things over and over again, I'm gonna keep it brief tonight in case there's any questions. One of the things I did here, I was, I was, took the opportunity to come to the work session, and I think there was a question about a roadway, and what type of roadway that was. There was a letter that was stated there was a roadway from Center Road, which goes to the Tilly's property just north of this. There is, in fact, that letter is in place, that, it's really more of a driveway than a roadway. What I mean by that is currently it's not to a public standard, nor is it to a, a traffic standard that would accommodate vehicles. What we're proposing on this would actually improve that for now and for the future, to allow 60-foot of right-of-way and a public roadway section to be built through this property. So that, that's the major differences that we see here. The, the three points I really wanna make is that we did not have any public opposition to this in the last hearing. There's 10 standards that, that are set aside in the, in the code, in the ordinance. This, this request meets those standards that are in, they're part of the official code of Georgia, which has been adopted by the city in their code for zoning requests. And, and we have to remember, there's really nothing, we've studied a lot. This is a 103-acre piece of property, and there's only about 30 acres that can be built on this. It, it lies in a place, in an area that is changing. It's adjacent to multifamily, or I call it multifamily, or townhome development in I-75. And to the north is vacant land, but, which is also zoned, one is zoned mining, the other is zoned multifamily. So the area is changing, there's nothing else that can be built on this feasibly. So, given that, we are requesting that a favorable consideration be taken for our application. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lutgens at this time? Thank you. We'll continue the public hearing for Z 23-06, and ask anybody who wishes to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time.
Robert Walker, 15 South Public Square, represent Tilly Properties. Again, I'll keep it very brief, as I've stated before, we are in favor of the project. We've worked diligently with the applicant and Mr. Lutgens to come up with a solution as, as it relates to this easement and access to the property, and we've, we've done that and achieved that. And again, if there are any questions that I may ask or answer that you guys may wanna ask, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Of course, Ms. Tilly is here as well, so.
I'm gonna ask, again, I guess I'll parse it this way. I mean, you're saying you're in favor of the project, or you're in favor of having a road paved to your property? Or both?
Well, I, I think we're, we're in favor of both at this point, Mayor. So, you know, I think the project itself is, you know, is, is, is a benefit, we see it, to, to the area, and, and of course, we obviously see a benefit to the roadway, not just our project or our property, but also to the, to the area in general, for the reasons that Mr. Lutgens stated, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Sure.
We'll continue the rezone hearing for Z 23-06, and again, anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the hearing for Z 23-06. Turn it over to council for further questions, comments, or consideration.
I make a motion to approve the zoning with the conditions presented by zoning staff.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
No.
Okay, and motion carries five to one. We'll move on to Z 24-01, Mr. Benino.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed rezoning for 109 and 111 Douglas Street. Property is currently zoned PS Professional Services, or non-residential to MU Multiple Use Commercial. It directly corresponds with the following case, the special use permit application for the landscape business, and the reason for that is that special use is allowed in the MU zoning district to allow that type of business, in the PS it is not. With that, Planning Commission held a public hearing and did recommend approval, and there have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Thank you. Questions for Randy at this time? And if there are none, I'll open up the public hearing for Z 24-01. And again, this is a zoning hearing, there's two different items, and we're gonna speak specifically to the rezone from professional services to multi-use. And I'll ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. And when doing so, if you would kindly state your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Mayor, Council, good evening. My name is Billy Jones, I'm the owner of Appalachian Landscape Company, currently at 478 Mission Road. And just give you a brief overview. The current house will be our staffing office, and obviously that will contain that. And then the vacant lot, we will have trucks, trailers, and selective landscape items that are stored there. But I wanna make it clear, we've been in business since August of 2001, and we're a landscape design and build company. We've been serving the community for 20-something-plus years, and we're here not to bring an eyesore to this property. I've got some ideas about the house, about the property itself, if this is approved. I actually have a staff that takes care of the property. As it was mentioned before, we're not gonna make a nursery out of it, and I would be a liar if I didn't say we wouldn't bring back items from time to time from jobs, and I wanna cover some of that. I have a small farm out in Taylorsville that will warehouse and store trees, plants, and things of that nature. And we don't sell mulch, we buy that from reseller, or retailers and wholesalers in the community. We don't store that in bulk, 'cause I think that was mentioned last time, that we were worried about a fire hazard. And, you know, if anything comes back, it's in a dump truck, or trailer, or anything of that nature. But again, we're, we're design and build, and we wanna, for the community side, if we were allowed to do this, we'd like to decorate that with landscaping and make it look nice and neat. And obviously, we'll exit on the Tennessee street side, I think that is part of the stipulation, we don't have an issue with that. But currently, Ms. Denise Archer has squatters that will be there from time to time, there's trash. I went out there and laid out with Mr. Hardig, he met with me earlier last week, and saw, laid out situations of, you know, if I, with parking and things of that nature. And I got to meet with Stephen Foye from the city, and he told me what I had to do if anything is over 5,000 square feet. I'm proposing to level the lot, the lot is actually hit, is unlevelled, and it's holding water toward the Tennessee street side, and we will level that out, we'll put crush and run down for a base, and a, an asphalt ground-up fines will be the parking. And obviously, truthfully, we'll have to go over 5,000 square feet, so I've contacted Kevin Stevenson at Stevenson Engineering, and there'll have to be a flow well put in to contain its own stormwater and things of that nature. But again, we're here to not bring an eyesore to the community. We've been a staple piece of the community for 20 years plus, and we're, we're not wanting to make a nursery out of the place. If this is allowed, we will make sure that it looks up to standard and above and beyond what, what is now. If you go out there now, there's limbs laying everywhere, there's debris behind the certain facility. There's a current six-foot wooden fence, and we would continue that for privacy use and to screen what we store there. And of course, based upon whatever, you know, stipulations we have to meet with setbacks and things of that nature. But that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Jones? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We'll continue the public hearing for Z 24-01, and again, ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for Z 24-01. Turn it over to council for further discussion, questions, or, or motions.
So the question really is about changing the zoning from professional services to multi-use?
Correct, that is the issue that we are taking up right now.
So with multi-use, Mr. Benino or Mr. Hardig, I guess that, there's a lot that we can put into multi-use, is that correct?
Yeah, it's very similar to the general commercials of the district. Except for multi-use actually has residential.
I think that's probably maybe one of the biggest concerns is the rezoning, I mean, I'll just voice it, but my, I guess, a concern is rezoning that from professional services to multi-use, and understanding what all can be put into multi-use. I think that's the biggest, I think it's the biggest question, because then, anything can go there later on in the future when we look at where it's located at across the street from residents. I know it's, I know we wanna say it's probably in a transitional zone, but residents are across the street all along, all down Douglas Street there. So I think it's, I don't know, that's, I'll just, I'll just voice my concern, that's.
And I share the same concerns, so I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. That's all right, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Okay, I have a motion to deny the rezone application 24-01, does anybody like to second that?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of denying the application, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
And any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
And the motion carries five to one.
Mayor, since y'all did deny Z 24-01, then item number five, SU 24-01 becomes moot, and y'all do not need to consider that.
Okay, so we just go on to?
Item number six.
Thank you. Randy, if you'll get us started with T 24-01.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Currently in our light industrial zoning district, we allow impound lots and towing business, but for some reason, we don't allow it in the heavy industrial, we, we allow it in the lesser category. But with that, the applicant is proposing a text amendment to allow it in the heavy industrial, as well as the light industrial. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment, and there have been no additions or changes to this application since the first reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, I'll open up a public hearing for T 24-01, ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time.
Hello, my name is Leah Harper, I am a co-owner and broker at H&amp;H Realty.
Can you give your address?
Yeah, sure.
Our clerk needs it, thank you.
107 Stoker Road, Cartersville, 30120. And I'm just here on behalf of the applicant and the landowner. The applicant is a tenant that we have secured on Wansley Drive, and he does wrecker services, automobile storage, and Wansley is kinda checkerboard between heavy industrial and light industrial. And so we actually didn't realize until he went to pull a permit that that was not an approved usage on that. And this is the recommendation to allow him to continue to stay there.
Great. Questions? Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Anybody else wishing to step forward to speak on T 24-01, for or against, may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T 24-01. Turn it over to council for further comment, questions, or consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Randy, I think this is the last time we gotta put up with you tonight.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Back in December, we held a public hearing to review the capital improvement element of the comp plan in our community work program. We have to do this annually, because we do have an impact fee ordinance on our books. With that, we go through this exercise, send this data and information, updated information, to the Department of Community Affairs and the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. Since we had the public hearing, there was one change to the document, we did add electricals, the electric system of, of the city. Got me some additional information to add to their capital projects. With that, we recommend your approval or the allowance of the mayor to sign the resolution submitting this for adoption.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve the mayor to sign the document.
Second. All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Gary, appreciate your trust. Ms. Drake, you have the next item, please.
Yeah, the, this is an updated agreement with Civic Plus that's going to restructure our billing schedule for the MUNICO qualification in which we send our approved ordinance as soon, and your approval is recommended.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jace. Mr. Roberts, you're up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am here seeking approval for CPL Architect, Architecture, Engineering, and Planning to develop a tenure master's plan for Parks and Rec. We did open that on January 10th, and got back and opened those RFQs on January 23rd. We had three separate companies put in, one from AEI, they're based out of Acworth, at a cost of $120,000. Brand Center Carroll Incorporated out of Lexington, Kentucky, at a price of $129,500. And the final being CPL Architecture, Engineering, and Planning out of Woodstock for a price of $117,950. I have included the scope of work, so that you can see what they would be doing. But, you know, the objective of this is to express the community's objectives, needs, and priorities for our leisure space and parks. They'll look at our programming, our facilities, and our services, and then also, this will, this plan would kinda act as a guide as we continue to grow and look at not only our programming, but also the building at Sam Smith, and, and as we continue to grow, to give us kind of a, that roadmap, so. This is not a budgeted item, but we have looked at it and felt like it was necessary as we kinda moved forward, so. Anybody have any questions?
Questions? If there are no questions, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
He's, he disconnected.
Okay, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Mr. Porter, you're up.
Yes, Mayor, the GDOT Transition Plan Design Services, this will be through Croft, this is part of the Americans Disability Act. We've got to do this, kinda show where our facilities are, make improvements on sidewalks and all, so our city facilities, I recommend approval. Disagreement to use Croft to help us with these services.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell?
Mayor, this is an encroachment agreement with Georgia Power to allow us to install some water facilities and sewer facilities on the transmission line that's over there around MLK. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to agree. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Do you want me to do the MOU? Are you opposed?
No.
Oh, okay, thanks. Keith, we'll just grab your stuff at the end, 'cause you're gonna be here anyway.
No problem, yes.
Mr. Forsyth, you're up.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the second reading of the Water and Sewer Capacity Fee Ordinance Update. As I mentioned before, this, this is a 24-year update to the capacity fees for water and sewer. The effect is a slight increase, specifically to increase single-family residents for water sewer, water capacity fees for $160, and sewer capacity fees will increase by $170, for a total of $330. And this is a one-time fee when, when a tap or service is established. It does change the methodology for calculating capacity fees for larger meters, greater than two-inch meters, which would be primarily industrial meters. Additionally, since the first reading, I did have to correct a typo in the outside-the-city sewer capacity fees. It increased by $100 roughly for each one of those, and that's in the smaller portion, not the large meter portion. It's recommended for your approval.
Just a couple of things, this is the first time this has been updated in how many years?
Twenty-three and a half.
And they're typically updated every?
Five years.
So it's been a while.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just wanted that noted, and again, I appreciate the hard work that went into this, I know it took a while, and that being said, any other comments? And if there are none, a motion's in order.
Uh, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to do a public hearing, thank you, Keith. You told me, I got it written on my sheet, but I just, I'm just gonna ignore it anyway. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing for the Water and Sewer Capacity Fee Update. Anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the Water and Sewer Capacity Fee Update, and turn it over to council for final consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Was that motion to approve amended?
As amended.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Earned your money tonight, right there.
I know. Have to pay attention.
Really? Want to take a look at that screen? All right, on to other things, Mr. Forsyth, continue.
Yes, sir. This is a resolution recommending the dedication and naming of the new Water Department Administrative Complex, and this is something that Dan brought to me several years ago, and that we've worked together to get this resolution done. And it would be naming the complex and dedicating it to the memory of Bob Jones, the former Water Department Director. I wholeheartedly recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Any doctor comment at all?
I just appreciate the Mayor and Council supporting this, as obviously Bob worked with us a lot of time, and unfortunately, it was taken away from us too early.
I will only add that it's well-deserved, and he left some big shoes to fill, and you've done a great job doing it.
Yes, sir.
Under a lot of different circumstances, so appreciate your leadership, and, and for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. That being said?
I have a comment. When I first came to council, I met Bob Jones, and he said to me, "You don't remember me, do you?" And I said, "No, not quite." He said, "I played on your football team for several years." I said, "Okay, okay." Then he said, "I played center on your football team." And on your football team, a center is the most important player on the team, most important quarterback. Because everything starts through him. And I was just so proud to see how he had advanced and grown, all right, to be the director of the Water Department. And I won't say I had nothing to do with it. I'm just overjoyed to work with him and to know him, and to have this building as, as an everlasting monument of him. It's what you deserve, I'm proud of him.
Why don't you make the motion?
I'll make the motion that we name the Water Department building after much deserved Superintendent Bob Jones.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, City. All right, let's see, oh, you've got, oh, Stephen Greer's gotta follow that. Go ahead, Stephen, give it a try.
I've talked Samantha about the ordering on that one. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is for the purchase of ArcGIS Enterprise Server software. This is the software we use to create maps, mapping data, that we use for utilities and, and other uses in the city. This is a three-year agreement, but we pay it in one-year installments, so this year it's a total of $39,700 from ESRI. This is not a budgeted item, but it will be funded with a 2020 SPOLOST, and I recommend it for your approval. it for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item for you, please, Stephen.
This item is the renewal of our Cisco Duo Two-Factor Authentication System. This is what we use to secure all of our logins for city servers and computers. It's $11,039 from CDWG. It is a budgeted item, and I recommend it for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Ms. Drake, back to you.
Yeah, Bartow County Elections have submitted their invoice for the services provided at the November 7th, 2023 municipal elections. That invoice is in the amount of $14,364.74. It is budgeted and recommended for approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hampton, we're going to have you do this one and that added item that we had earlier, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. First item up was a recommendation for purchase of a pallet of our 2S meters that we use for residential installations. These meters have, are the ones that were agreed upon for our AMI system, available through Echo Controls. And when I find my notes here that I just covered up on my, there we go. We're requesting for this amount to be approved for the amount of $40,000, I'm doing this out, $40,534.44 for 224 of those meters, which is basically a pallet of meters.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And then that added item is relative to purchasing some transformers.
Yes, sir. We came up needing three transformers. We bid them independently just to try to get the best deal overall. Come to find out, on all three of them, Gresco came back the best bid on all three. We're requesting for approval to purchase a 300 KVA 277 480-volt transformer, and a 150 and a 500 28 volt three-phase. After receiving the bids and deeming Gresco the best bid on all three of them, the grand total would be $70,961 to purchase all three from Gresco. Recommend your approval. It's a budgeted expense.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, you're up with the next couple, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and counsel, requesting approval for the fourth quarter 2023 Motorola radio invoice that we have in Bartow County. It's in the amount of $37,150.83. It services our police, fire, fibercom, gas, electric, public works, and recreation departments. It's our piece in the radio system.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Freddie.
Yes, sir. We're asking for the, we're bringing forth the Rizhong, the guaranteed maximum price that they have as a construction manager on Fire Station Number Five. We're also totaling in the items that we, from the city's portion, are buying of the other additional mount. We're asking for a total ask of $8,280.41 that will be paid from the general fund.
Thank you. Questions on this item? And I'll just make a note, again, you mentioned this being funded out of the general fund, an $8.2 million fire station.
Yes, sir.
And very similar to the one that we built on Charlie Harper Drive, which was about half that just a few years ago.
Yes, sir.
Prices have gone up. But again, I'll mention that funding coming from the land proceeds that were part of industrial property sold at Highland 75. So I think it's important for our bosses to know.
Yes.
That those proceeds are being used for something that's not going to go into a SPOLOST or is not going to come out of taxes. This is something we're funding basically as a return on investment for the trust they put in us in that industrial park.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make that of note. So, that being said, if there's no other comment or questions, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. First item we have is the Mission Road Tap Grant Application. Leadership within the city of Carsville has expressed an interest in providing pedestrian and/or connectivity along West Cherokee Avenue and Mission Road. Earlier this year, we put together a concept, split it into phases, and this particular item tonight is Phase One, the sidewalk expansion. It extends from Charles Street down to Stately Oakster Drive, and it will require some significant preliminary engineering to be done because we have to cross over railroad tracks, a bridge, and lots of construction in floodplain. We are seeking permission for the mayor to sign a resolution, a letter in order to apply for a grant application that's due February 9th through Bartow County Grant. They'll be writing the application, and they just need this support. This is an 80/20 match, a 20% match. We're estimating to be, for preliminary engineering, to be about $280,000. If the grant application is approved, we'll select an engineer based on the required procurement process for federally funded projects.
Okay. Thank you. There are questions for Wade on this?
Wade, I need you to remind me, I know this is just the beginning, and this is the grant application process, but is this the big sidewalk project that we said could go one way or another? It could be $6 million or $12 million at the end?
Yes. I don't know about the $12 million part, but it's the big one we're talking about. It is the, yeah, this is the first phase of it. So, you know, we're doing this preliminary engineering through GDOT and using the requirements that we would to be able to proceed forward to construction funding. So that's what our intent would be, is if this gets passed, then we go to the next phase. We're doing this through Grassdale Tap, the Grassdale Road Tap Grant now. So, and we're almost to the point where, well, we actually found some other funding sources for that through GDOT. But, yeah, we actually did preliminary engineering and we did right-of-way funding. So there's like three different processes there. This is the first process, process of Phase One.
Gotcha. I was in that work session, so I apologize.
That's all right. It gives us engineering phase, work done. That way, we can proceed forward at a later date. The funding came available through the sidewalk, we'd have to have this work done ahead of time.
Right. And we feel like this is the first step of, the most important step, because it connects downtown to the trail.
Do have a question relative to the portion that's outside of the reserve, where the retention pond is, or whatever the?
Yes, sir.
Why, is that not part of the development? And why were there not sidewalks already put in that area as part of that development?
That was previous to my time here at the city, and I'm not real sure why it wasn't.
So you're telling me to look it up? Google it, huh?
Good answer.
As you see, like Jackson Farm.
So the reason is that it's not in a floodplain, or if it's not in a, I mean, it's not exempt from any, it just, anyway, I think.
Yeah. And then that was, Reserve at Pettit Creek was built a long time ago, and I, you know, I don't know how aggressive we were with sidewalks during that time, so that might be why they just stopped it at the.
We weren't. We adopted that internal policy afterwards.
Yeah.
The policy at that time was where there were improvements with XO, DSO, and more, or there was curb cover better installed. That's typically the only spot in sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it just kind of wait, but you see on Jackson Farm, we had them extended along the property frontage, and so that actually, our Phase Two didn't even include that, but so we've got that portion done on the Phase Two up to the railroad.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries five to one.
Four to one.
Four to one, excuse me. Thank you. Grapple truck bid award.
Yes, sir. We, we, we see, we had sealed bids that were open for the intended purchase of a 27-yard grapple truck on January 24th. We received seven bid proposals. They ranged from $204,000 to $255,295, and they ranged in delivery time from 10 to 300 days. After evaluation by staff, Public Works recommends the purchase of the Peterson TL3, body-mounted on a freightliner M2 chassis at a price of $212,842, with a 10-day turnaround from Environmental Products Group. This vehicle is the best bid due to quality and delivery time. This truck will be replacing the 2008 grapple truck that needs major repairs, that we're going to take out of commission, and it is a non-budget item, but will be paid through the general fund.
Thank you. Questions or discussion on this item?
So, Mayor, I guess if the council can include, if you do agree to purchase this, go ahead and put the other item on GOV deals, so we're not waiting for that one to be listed as the old one off there.
Right.
So make that as part of a motion?
If you could, please. We don't, not waiting.
Well, I can't. One of these other six, probably five probably can.
I make a motion to purchase the recommended truck from Public Works and to place the surplus on GOV deals.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Wade.
Okay. This next item, we've had several, through the years, many years, we've had some flooding issues on Irwin Street and Lake Street, and we put together, we hired CTI engineers to do a project for us, stormwater improvements using ARPA funds. And we have actually bid this twice over the last little over six months. In June, no one came to the table to bid on it. So we re-advertised it again. The second time, in October, we did get three bids. They ranged from $773,430 to $2,395,035. The low bidder actually removed their, withdrew their bid. The second lowest bidder was site engineering. We felt like the price was a little high, and so we had our engineering consultants start to negotiate with the second lowest bidder. They did reduce their bid to $1,890,280. It's recommended by the consultant as well as Public Works to accept this original bid with a deductive change order. In doing so, we recommend the mayor's signature to the notice of award and to enter into an acceptable contract and change order with site engineering that will be reviewed by our city attorney. This is a, we are using the ARPA funds, so therefore, we are indicating that we feel this project would help our Stormwater Division manage, reduce, and recapture stormwater drainage that would result in flooding at the location, and therefore, this project will be eligibility, eligible for ARPA funds. It's estimated $262,080 will utilize, we will utilize water and sewer funds, while the remaining $1,625,900,000 will be funded by ARPA. The 200, the water and sewer portion is not budgeted, but it'll be paid from sewer revenue.
Thank you. And again, this is money that, this comes from the, basically COVID money that came down from the government.
That's correct.
Our city has decided we're going to put towards stormwater and improvement projects like this. So that's the main source of the funding. That's why you read us that nice little bedtime story. And I'll add for time for motion, if there's any other comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Read it to us again.
Thank you. I may be able to avoid that, maybe, but this is, the second portion of this is tied to contract with CTI. It's basically an amendment to their original contract we had with them to do RPR services, which is a resident project, they're a resident project representative for the city of Carsville. So they're basically going to be doing schedule management, conference representation, be a liaison with the contractor, and review shop drawings, samples, and basic construction management. They're proposing to do this for six, construction administration services for $16,000, and RPR services for $56,000. And since, as indicated before, this project is eligible for ARPA funds, we recommend approval of this project, of this amendment.
Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion, Jeffrey?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last item for you, Wade.
All right. The city of Carsville Stormwater Program continues to comply with our MPDS Phase Two Municipal Sewer System, which is MS4. Every year, we have to submit annual reports to the EPD. Sometimes we have to follow up with those submittals, and we're just requesting that the mayor sign a letter that allows, allows the Public Works Director to sign those documents.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll go back to the remaining five items that we'll count as four here in a minute, but Mr. Porter, get us started off on that.
Yes, Mayor. The Seventh Amendment to the PSA Agreement, basically the purchase and sale agreement with 178 West Main Street. The buyer's asked for two weeks, two more weeks to close on that, so February 16th would be the closing date. He has shared his, I gave you a handout this evening showing what the market materials are, but he is moving forward that project, but recommend to change this for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell?
Yes, Mayor. This is in regards to, I guess we call it the old primary school now. The city school system wishes to enter into an agreement with the state of Georgia to establish a quick start, start center there for the training of the new employees for Q Sales and SK America. They'll get $27,000 a month rent from the state, and as, you know, y'all know, the city actually owns the property and the school system manages it, so y'all need to approve the memorandum of understanding. It is recommended by the school system for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Back to you, Dan.
Yes, sir. Real estate purchase and sale agreement for, to man and restorations.